Good evening. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for July 12, 2018. This meeting is being audio and video recorded for the open meeting laws of Massachusetts. Tonight we'll have a public hearing, continue the public hearing for the enclave, and then the ZBA will be discussing some regulations and any unanticipated new business, as well as looking at the subsidized housing inventory worksheet. First, I would like to congratulate Devin Howe, who last month was appointed a full member of the zoning board of appeals by the Board of Selectmen. Bob Luciano has graciously accepted to be, continue on as an associate member for the Board, so we want to thank you both for your past contributions and your continued contributions to the Board. Job well done.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, the enclave. Dan, Tom, would you like to start off?
Good evening. For the record, my name's Tom DePlacido, representing the enclave here tonight. And one of the, from the last hearing, basically, we're really in a standstill or a limbo trying to come up with a plan that everybody agrees on with unit count, density, intensity, however we want to define it with that. We did meet with Cliff Bowman, did have a meeting with a couple of members of the Board, and also Mr. Hill was there, and Mr. Smolak was there as well, and we did take some comments from that meeting and incorporate them into the plan that Matt Murva from Boulder Engineering is going to actually talk about here in a little bit. I think it's actually a really, a very attractive plan. It incorporated the comments. We actually have a mixture of not only duplexes and triplexes, but also quads as well. And that does some positives and some negatives. When you have a quad unit, you have actually now two interior dwelling units that aren't quite as marketable and saleable as two end units that you'd have in a ranch or anything that have windows on all three sides. Now you only have windows in the front and the back when you have quad units. So, sales price and marketability, they're not as attractive overall as you'd have for end units. So, you know, some of the income, you know, that you may have for proceeds and sales with these units has decreased a little bit. On the other hand, too, you have some, a little bit more cost per square foot because there's a good chance we have to introduce sprinkler systems. You have demising walls in between the units for fire protection, so sometimes that cost per square foot can increase as well. And also, we're trying to actually be, you know, good neighbors, good developer with this project, and it's been brought to our attention a couple of times about potential of a sidewalk on Cleveland Street coming from 115 to Village Green to actually potentially enhance some, you know, some more pedestrian foot traffic and maybe open that up a little bit. Village Green itself is not really heavily traveled, you know, and we're looking at widening the road to 24 feet and reclaiming that and paving that over as part of this proposal. So, with not that much traffic, you know, it'd be very conducive and pedestrian friendly to walk from the enclave up Village Green and then on Cleveland Street where we could potentially put a sidewalk that would bring you to 115. That being said, all this, you know, has an expense to it. So, the plan that actually is presented to you tonight actually has 59 units instead of 56. It actually went up by three. We don't have to do that, but that does impact the performers, and it also impacts what we may or may not be able to do on Cleveland Street with a sidewalk. So, we're just trying to balance this out a little bit here with everything from a performer basis and what we can also offer for maybe some potential offsite improvements that we think would enhance the neighborhood and also this development and actually creating a, you know, a much more pedestrian-friendly walkway along Cleveland instead of trying to walk down Cleveland, which is a heavily traveled road. So, with that said, I want to open up to Matt. He put together a very nice plan. I don't know if we have any comments from anybody or from Cliff, but we can wait till after the presentation for that.
Thanks, Tom. Matt Murva with Boulder Engineering. I did bring a hard copy of the plan that, if you wouldn't mind passing down, Devin. So, the last time we were here, this was the plan that we had brought with us. I didn't, that is not what you're looking at on your 11 by 17. This was the previous plan that we had when we came to the previous hearing and then had the work session with Cliff and the people that Tom just mentioned. And one of the, one of the things that came out of that work session was really trying to promote a little more pedestrian connectivity throughout the project in eliminating some of these 18-foot-wide driveways that we were using to organize some of the units to try to get them off sort of the main loop road. And one of the other goals that we discussed at that meeting was trying to distribute the open space a little more equitably throughout this new neighborhood, so that it wasn't all in one central green, that people throughout these units could enjoy access to common open space. So, one of the, one of the ways that Cliff suggested, Cliff, the peer reviewer, suggested of trying to incorporate some more of that open space was actually to kind of tier the density down the hillside, where the units up along the abutters here are your lowest density. Those remain duplexes, and those are the single-story units. And then having kind of a second tier of a little more dense units as you move further down the hillside, and then sort of the higher density at the bottom. So, we did look at incorporating some of that, and this is the resulting plan, where we did maintain duplexes in similar configuration to what we had on the previous plan. But now we have a 24-foot-wide loop road that I'm outlining right here that does, does provide full access, and then up into, it's also 24 feet wide up into the cul-de-sac here. In that second tier, that a little more dense area, these are triplexes in here. We have four triplex buildings right there and one here. And then the higher density, the fourplexes, the quads, if you will, are these four buildings right here. And what, that concentration of those units into more multi-unit buildings allowed for was the creation of some pocket parks in these three locations that I'm pointing to right here, which units back up onto, so the back decks look out onto this little pocket park area, and the backs of this unit look out onto that pocket park. Then they have their driveways that are off of the main loop, and then this unit looks out onto this pocket park, and this one onto this one. And then everybody else is essentially looking out at wooded open space. So, really, there's kind of an amenity for all of those units. I think there was a plan circulated before we changed the angle on this unit right here, but we just twisted it down a little bit so that it is looking directly back out into the woods and not at that fourplex a little bit down the hill. So, that's kind of the density distribution. In terms of connectivity and sidewalks, we're showing sidewalk around the common space, but also that connects up back into this cul-de-sac here. And then we're also showing a sidewalk around the entire loop road here, and then connections through these units down into the wooded open space beyond, which could be utilized by people in the development and the public open space there. We're showing an entry feature at the, at the arrival here, which would just be a little paved plaza with a, with a sign wall around this corner here, kind of an identity feature and a little gathering space at the corner of that common. And then we see this, this area, which would also serve as, as the leaching field, being up a little higher than these pocket parks, but there would be pedestrian connections up into those, either upstairs, connecting from those parks right up to that path, or around, around the main sidewalk to get up there at a more gentle slope. So, these were the, the main changes to the plan that really tried to distribute that open space a little more equitably and create open space opportunities for, for all of the units, really. And then concentrate the density and the intensity, if you will, along the wooded edge where, where there really are no abutters, there really are no neighbors down along here, and all of these units get great views out into the wooded areas. Tom, did I miss anything we discussed in that, that meeting that you can recall? I think those were...
I think you captured all of it here. Every unit here has a private backyard.
I think, I think you captured all of it. Every unit on this plan now has a private backyard, whether it overlooks woods or a pocket park. There's some, there's some great connectivity, and we still have some nice spacing around the perimeter to respect the neighbors' properties and things as well.
One thing this also does is distributes the, the on-street guest parking and associates that with these little pocket parks. So, we have some head-in spaces here associated with that one, some head-in spaces here, some head-in spaces here, and then we, we still have those parallel spaces out in front of the mail kiosks out on the, the common space there. Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to, I'm looking at the two plans. The third, I got the first, the second, the third. This is the fourth iteration, right? So, I'm looking at this one, and I just have a couple of...
Sure.
Questions. In the quadrant up in the upper left-hand corner...
Mm-hmm.
It appears from looking at the topographical lines between the two that you have moved the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 units back in order to accommodate an increased size of roadway. Am I correct there? In other words, I'm looking at the, the distance here between the lines from this one, which was the one we saw at the last meeting, and this one. And so, I'm, and this is a 25-foot roadway now that I'm looking at here?
This is actually 18 paved with...
That hasn't changed.
We really haven't changed the configuration of that area. That's, that's almost a direct copy of the, the last plan.
Oh, it is okay.
Other than the fact that this unit turned a little bit, and that one is not there.
Okay, okay. All right.
So, just, so everyone else can see, we were just talking about, on the previous plan, this cul-de-sac is essentially in the same configuration that we show on the new plan. The difference being that we turned the angle of this unit, so it's basically in the same alignment as this one here. And then this unit has been eliminated, and there's now a, a pocket park here, essentially.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
Last time, if you can go back to the previous plan for one second?
Sure, Ken.
Last time we talked about the lowest point of the project area, and is that a leaching field at the very end, or...
No, this was just a stormwater feature.
Okay.
And we would still have something similar here, but it's more in a linear fashion as we'd shown on the submitted engineered plans.
Is there any difference between what was there before in terms of the requirement of it versus what you have here? They are equal?
Those still need to be sized with engineering and, and stormwater calculations, so we're showing it as kind of a placeholder right now. We do have, we've left plenty of room for the development of those swales and low areas, but that's, that still has not been designed until we kind of hone in on a, an overall concept that everyone's ready to move forward with.
And if I recall, last time, possibly along one of the roadways in the lower end of the project, was there an area where you had to have access in terms of access to the stormwater area, or was it access to any of the, I guess, is it septic system?
Right. That was on the original, let me go back to, so in, in the previous version, so two plans ago, we had shown that area right here with a little pull-off parking area. We haven't located that yet on the new plan, but we, we think that these pocket park areas would be a logical place to have that pull-off and where you could put that equipment. It's underground, essentially.
That pull-off was for, what are we servicing there? We're servicing...
I think the pump may need to be removed and serviced occasionally. I think that's what that area is for. I'm not the civil engineer, I apologize, but...
That would actually be like a leaching area. It would have an oversized septic tank. Would have to be pumped every, you know, year, a year and a half or so. Traditionally, almost like a house, but just a lot bigger.
Okay. And you have to still find that location for the new plan?
The leaching area would be in that middle open green space there, right, right in there.
Just as it was on the previous version.
And then we would have to locate those tanks and pumps, probably somewhere underneath those pocket parks.
Okay.
Down, down here.
None of those. Okay.
Thank you.
Another question, getting back to roadways in general compared to the, the plan that was presented a month ago in this plan. 18 feet around with the upper left-hand little areas, you mentioned that. And then what about the, once you come in the main drive and you go down towards that area? In other words, is, what was the width of that roadway, the main road?
This was, this was going to be 24 as of the last plan.
Oh, so still 24.
We're still doing 24 there.
Okay. So, any roadway...
Only now, we also bring 24 all the way down...
Okay.
And through here, whereas previously, we brought a 24-foot road that didn't really have any units on it, and then had these 18-foot-wide driveways that came off of that 24-foot loop.
Matt, help me with the math. The, you have four quads, four triplexes, and how many duplexes?
Four quads, five triplexes.
Five, five triplexes?
14 duplexes.
14 duplexes. And that gets you to the...
59.
The 59, okay.
Five, five, I believe. There's one, two, three, four, five triplexes, and one, two, three, four quads, and then the rest, those are the 14 duplexes.
Mr. Chairman, how many, what do we have left to do in, in terms of peer review of this project? What are the next steps?
Well, we haven't done the engineering, so the next step will be an engineering peer review once we get a plan.
Once we get a plan.
That we're happy with.
All right, because here's my problem. I don't like this plan. We talked a lot about density, and here we go. I have no good math, but it looks to me like we've gone from 56 to 59. That seems like an increase in the number of units, which in my opinion doesn't help the density issue whatsoever. And I still think we're trying to squeeze, I use the analogy, five pounds, 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag. So, I, you know, I don't want to have the applicant go through more kabuki dances, if you will, and spend money on engineering if we're not going to come to some agreement on the density, the number of units, and how this thing is going to lay out. I'd rather, you know, play poker with my cards face up and come to some sort of a decision on where we want to go with this project. Because right now, if they're going to spend money doing the engineering, I don't think that's fair to them. I am, I would vote against this. It's dead on arrival as far as I'm concerned. I don't like it. Still too dense. Doesn't work for me. And so I think as a board, we've got to figure out how we want to take the next step. Do we want him to go ahead and engineer this, and then just write our comprehensive permit with the number that we think is appropriate? I think we need to figure that out.
Mr. Chairman, to kind of build on that, I am very disappointed, thank you very much, with the quad units. I, I just don't think that they're reflective of what we want to see in our town. And, you know, driving, from a density issue, yes, but I also just think in general, from a, a community perspective, having quad units is, is not something that we want to look at in the town. I personally, I personally thought that the third plan, although was too dense by a couple of buildings, was a huge improvement to the second plan, and I believe the fourth plan is a major step back from the third plan. I, I personally liked some of the, I'll call it driveway roads that you had, Matt, all right? And I thought it looked more pleasing to the eye, at least from an aerial view, as to the, the abutters, I don't mean the outside abutters, but the internal abutters of the properties. And I am absolutely opposed to any quadrant, fourplex units. I just think that's not something that, as a zoning board member, I would ever approve.
Tom, do you have any triplex units in River's Edge?
No, we don't. It's all duplex units at River's Edge. And the quad units, I mean, we never introduced those in prior plans. That came out of comments from the peer review. That's why those were introduced and things.
Okay. Is the reason, these quad units are all single-story? Is that right?
They're actually two-story.
Oh, so have we seen the design, the floor plans or architectural plans for these buildings? These are different buildings than the ones you proposed before?
Basically, what we did was, when we had, I think it was either the second or third version, when we introduced two-story duplexes, we basically grouped those, that footprint together to create a quad unit. So, I mean, trying to get some type of site plan here that's representative of what we can go forward with engineering-wise, that's what we did, tried to, try to present that footprint here. But, you know, to go architecturally and try to design that out right now, no, we wouldn't. We, we did not do that.
So, are these, these, are these quad buildings, are they, are the units side by side? In other words, they're not, you have both floors. If you, if you own one of the units, you have the first and second floor together. Is that right?
They're townhouse, not garden-style.
Townhouse, right. I mean, have you thought about, if, if the objection here is the footprint and the size of these buildings, have you thought about smaller building but have, you know, each corner, so you have garden apartments?
Are you saying like a two or three-story garden-style building?
Like a two-story building, but, you know, on, on the first floor, you'd have two units, and the second floor, you'd have two units. And that, and that might eliminate your concern about having these interior units with only windows on two sides. You'd have, you'd be able to have windows on, on three sides.
Did not look at that specifically on, in general, a lot of, I don't think people want to have people living above them or below them out here, you know, garden-style units. I just haven't seen a lot of success with them. It's not to say that they wouldn't be successful. I mean, maybe architecturally, they could be designed out. I mean, the one-floor living is attractive. I just don't know how that would go. We'd, we'd end up with elevators or, or something too, since we're, but age-restricted demographic here, so that may add some costs with it as well. I think we'd have to look at maybe even bigger than a four unit to really, if you had one elevator and then stairs, you might want to be able to handle six units on a second floor instead of, you know, two or four. We'd have to take a whole different look and approach of it, I think.
I mean, the concern might be from the board members, and maybe they can articulate it, is, is that there's just a lot of building and pavement on, on a relatively small property. And so, if you were clustering these units, if you're condensing the units more, perhaps there'd be more green space and more, more elbow room. Just, just a thought.
Yeah. I appreciate that. And the quad units, I mean, they can be dropped down to triplexes, or the triplexes can be dropped down to duplexes. Once again, I mean, it's trying to balance out the performer and what we're trying to do with potentially some offsite improvements with that, too. So, there is a bit of balancing there. So, we can look at, I think actually the triplexes in the middle, turning them into duplexes might create a lot more green space in the middle with that, and might look a lot more attractive than reducing the quads in the back, even though I'm not, you know, really favorable with the quads. I think that's a good place for them if we're trying to create some density.
Are you still, this is still a for-sale project?
Yes.
Not rental? Okay. And, and the buffer line, just so I understand, I can't really read the, the fine print, but is the, is the wetland buffer, the 100-foot buffer, is that the last dotted line away from the wetlands? Is that, is that 100 feet away? Is that, is that 100 feet away?
That's correct. This, this line here?
Yep.
Yes.
And where's the limited work line for natural heritage? You have a...
So the old one is right here. That's the old configuration. And we've tucked it in now and kind of traded some space. So we're keeping the same area essentially, but just reconfiguring it a little bit along that new line that I just pointed out. So this, this shows both the old and the new line.
So you've still got the same amount of restricted area, you just, you'd have to go back to natural heritage and get permission to change it?
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I, Tom, I have a simple solution. You know, I hear your argument for duplexes, the marketability of them is better, you like that concept. You know, put in all duplexes and reduce the number. I mean, it can be done. We don't have to squeeze so many units into this site. Have duplexes, but a significant reduction in the number. I don't know why that doesn't work.
I think, I think what we're hearing, Tom, and all the other members, but I think Mike's right. We're trying to get five, 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag. Is this, what's, 10 acres, 10 acres of buildable space, or is it less than that on this? What is this, is this, I know, I know we have 20 acres going to conservation. It's a 30-acre site. Is it 10 acres we're building on or less than that?
I'll have to go back and check, Chris, I don't have that...
I think it's less than 10 even.
Yeah.
It's a little bit more.
It's right around there. Yeah, I, just looking, looking at some of the developments that are around the same footprint of buildable space, 25 Rockwood, 84 Cleveland Street, we're looking at 40 and 42 units. And when you go down to Village Green, I tried to look at Rivers Edge, tried to look at this, and, you know, Rivers Edge is on 115. There are no residential houses around it. It sort of has its own village, really. It really is. And you really don't get into some of the older homes in Norfolk till you start coming up 115 to the south side. This is in a residential area, an established, older community in town. And I think when you start to see the numbers of these units in this smaller space compared to what we've already approved, I think it, it's just, it's just, it's too many. And I, I tried to look at Rivers Edge and take two duplexes and sort of, I took a picture of them and combined them together, quadplex, and I agree with Don. It's, it's not something that I think Norfolk's ready for or wants to see in any residential neighborhood, whether it be a 40B or not a 40B. So I think we're just, I think we're at a, we really, as much as, and I agree with Don, I like, I like Plan Three better than Plan Four. Nothing against Marv, I think you've done a good job, and you're trying to, you're trying to meet our needs. But I just think we have, I hate to say it, it's just too many units on this site. It just, it, for some reason, does not work. And, you know, it looks like a duck, it quacks like a duck, it probably is a duck. And, and I think, at least, I think Mike's, Don said it, I probably, I agree with both of them. I don't know what the other members feel, but it sounds like we've just tried to jam too many units into six to 10 acres of land. And it just, we can't get there. And we certainly don't want you doing any further work if we can't get to this resolve. And I think we've got to either decide what we want for number of units, or you have to go back again and try to figure this thing out. But I think, obviously, Don has stated he will not approve a four-unit. I do not like the four units. I thought I might, but when I took your units over there at Rivers Edge and put them together, I felt it looks, it just doesn't meet the character of Norfolk. I understand you have a pro forma, and so you have to, and you have to satisfy that. But I just think we've, we're really at somewhat of an impasse that we've got to try to, we've got to get, try to get beyond. And I think the number of units just does not allow us to get there. Any, Kevin, Joe?
Well, last time we were, when we left here with Plan Number Three, I think it was 27 duplexes in the plan? And it was 27, I think, 54 units?
It was actually, it was actually 28 for 56 units.
Right, and I remember that we were talking about possibly eliminating a couple of duplexes, which is what Mike was talking about. He wanted to see even some of those reduced. So I guess we are at a standstill about the number of units here. We were talking about even less than the 56 last time when we spoke.
And I understand it's not our place to say this many units. You have to decide to your pro forma what works. And, and that's, I think, I think you're hearing that, is that something's got to be done. It's just too many units for this board to appreciate. It's just too dense for this area of town. And again, looking at 84 Cleveland, looking at 25 Rockwood, you know, we've got 32 units at 25 Rockwood. We've got, I think, 32 units at 84 Cleveland. And they're at six acres and seven acres, and now we're jumping it up to 56. It's a dramatic increase.
Well, I, I believe we agree on two out of three things here.
That's good.
I'm not a fan of the quads myself. I never really was. The only reason they're on here is because of the peer review meeting. And I do like the prior plan better than this plan. So that's two out of three. If we could go back to the, to the, to the prior plan and, on the screen, let's, let's look at this for a second here. I think everybody would want a private backyard if they were living in these. But, so we can get some very constructive input here, and we can come back with something reasonable on this, that the board would find reasonable. Where would we, where would the board want to see more green space? I mean, is the 18-foot driveways wide enough? Or do they have to be all 24 feet wide? 18 is what's over at the Village with very similar driveways. Are we better off to keep them at 18 and create more green space and eliminate a few units? Or is the 24, do we want to eliminate units and have more wider pavement? I'm asking the board this, this type of decision with this. I need some guidance here.
Rivers Edge is 18 feet, correct?
The, the main roads are 24, but all the spurs are 18.
Okay.
Some are even narrower, actually.
So you would keep the main spur here as 24, and then go to the 18 to the inlets?
Yes. Now, we have some units in here that back up, you know, where one backyard is looking into another backyard. Very similar to the, to the Village. You know, is, is maybe, if we go to that circle area there, right up, right up in here, is maybe trying to create that pocket park that's part of the next plan, Plan Four, and taking one of these units out and spreading that out. Is that something that...
The last time we did X out a couple buildings, we were asking you to consider, and I'll point to the screen at the moment.
Okay.
I think we had put Xs possibly over this building.
Yep.
I think one of these buildings. And I was trying to get at getting some additional, we'll call it pocket parks now, pocket parks now.
So, and that's completely different than how we were guided in the, in the peer review meeting.
I'm sorry, I didn't know about the peer...
So I mean, if it's something like that, and spreading it out and creating some pocket parks like that, and spreading some of the units out, is that more in line with what the board's looking for?
You know, instead of us trying to, I'm not an architect, landscape architect or a design engineer. I don't know where to place the units. What I will tell you, Tom, is that if you're looking for some guidance from me personally, I think the number you should be shooting for is about 40 units in this project. And if you can design a project with 40 units, I'd be very happy. So I'm putting, playing poker with my cards face up.
I appreciate that.
So that's, that's what I'm looking for.
And in the, in the same spirit, I'm not the one who calls all the shots and just makes all the decisions on this project, so I can't answer that. And my gut feeling is that may not fly with everything, but I would have to go back and talk with the Norfolk Holdings Group.
I mean, I'm just one person on the board. I don't know how the other members feel, but that's something I would be looking for.
Looking at the numbers, I think we're, we're looking at that kind of number. And I, and I can, I can appreciate, you know, the folks in New York do not know, will not live here. We will live here, other people will live here. This will be part of our community. And I think we, I think it's just, you hate, you look at it, you look at it, you look at it, and you come to the same conclusion. We're trying to put little pieces into the puzzle to get to a number. And I think we got to, I think we got to go back and say, there's too many pieces in this puzzle for this acreage of land. And I think 40 is a number that, you know, I've already, I think in the last meeting we said, there's one, two, three, four. I can, I can, I can pull out six units from here, which is 12 right there. So it does take us, it does get us close to that 40 unit. So I think, I think that's, I would say if that was, and again, it's up to the board, is, to me, that would be the marching orders, is to go back and, and ask them to look at 40 units. And no triplexes, no quadplexes. And I think, I have no issue with 18-foot roads, other than the, the main thoroughfare going through the, through it. I don't know if any of the board members have problems with that. I think 18-foot roads on the inner circles would be fine.
I agree with that.
I agree.
So if we look at, is it, is the project at 25 Rockwood and was the other one?
84 Cleveland.
84 Cleveland.
Yeah.
If we look at that, look at the acreage and the amount of units in there, and come up with a unit per acre, and try to apply that to here, that's what you're striving for?
Not, no, because we're not really, we're not 100% happy with those, but that's sort of our benchmark. So we look at those, and we're trying to say, do we, do we like those? We, I think most of the board members that polled would say they don't like the way 84 Cleveland Street, we decided it. But we get smarter. I mean, each project, we get a little smarter. But I certainly am not going to ask you to go to 30 units on eight acres when I've allowed 40 units on eight acres. So that's, I think that's where we're coming up with that, that 40 unit, is that we're looking at the acreage and saying is, why would we put 56 units on six or seven or eight acres when in the past we've not come anywhere near that? And we're looking at the same kind of units, duplexes.
You know, Tom, with hindsight, we probably would not have approved 106, 108 the way it is.
No, and we probably wouldn't approve 84 the way it is.
Yeah.
But we did.
And so...
Every project, every project's different, and I, you know, encourage the board to think that, I mean, that there are, like, the Rockwood project is right in the train station, right? I mean, so there might be a density bonus for the fact that people can walk to Townstone, or they can walk to the train. And I would also advise the board not to think of this in terms of numbers. It's not, it's not necessarily the density, the number of units. It's really, I think the objection you're hearing from the board members, at least what I'm hearing, is, is the feel of this project being too overcrowded. So it's not, it's not a number. It's not like you get to 40 and suddenly this is great. 40 could be bad too. It's really just the congestion on the site and the way these buildings are laid out. I think what the board is trying to say is they want to be proud of this product, like they are with other projects in town and, and other projects that you've built. There is a good way to build this, and I think there's a right number. It may not be 40, it might be 36, it could be 42. I mean, it's, I don't, I think throwing a number out there is probably not, not necessarily what they're saying. I think, I think what they're saying is it's a lower number than 56. And, and just to go back to the peer review, just to be fair, the, the peer review suggestion of having buildings with more units was intended to create more open space and green space, more, more elbow room. That didn't actually happen with your, with your last plan. And, I mean, your density went up, and I think, I think the feel of it wasn't any better. I don't think, it didn't feel any less congested. And that was the point of having more condensed buildings with four units in them, that hopefully there'd be more, more, more space. But that, you know, again, maybe that, maybe that wasn't a good idea, maybe we should stick with duplexes, but...
That was Dan's idea, though. And, you know, and I, and I did, I did take some time last week, and I went over to Holliston, to Holliston Woods, the one down to Pulte, and I did go over to Medfield. And I sort of walked around, I started talking to people. And the one thing that most people are objecting, objecting to at these 55 and elders is, is privacy. That you walk out your door and you're being accosted by your neighbor, only because they're right there too. And so people said they, they're giving up their privacy with the number of units that are being built on these, these type of projects. And, and as much as they like having neighbors, they said there's too many, and it's, you walk out your door and everybody's there. So they've lost a little bit of privacy. And, and both in Medfield and in Holliston, they both said, the one complaint they both had, other than some of the building construction, was that you lose privacy. And they really felt that that was a big deal. So I think when you've got 56 units, you really, and with the way we have them set up, you're going to really lose some privacy. And the quadplexes, I think, clearly would do that. And I think that's an issue we've got to address, is, as a, as a board, is that do we want to maintain some privacy and some of the rural nature of Norfolk?
So...
And the general layout of, of the property provides you with quite a bit of flexibility, which you've utilized in terms of all the peripheral buildings, to, I mean, all the buildings, basically, in the entire exterior of the unit all face out, I'm looking at you, this plan here, all face out and have privacy. And then all of a sudden, you pop in four, five, six units that are in the center, which, you know, again, I echo the comments that I've heard from everybody else. And certainly looking out your back window to your neighbor's back window is not something that I would think is something that we want to support. But the, I think that the peripheral units that you put out on, on Plan Three look, you know, very, very acceptable. I would encourage you to look at the density in the center.
So it's, it seems like, from a starting point, where everybody's leaning a little bit more towards Plan Three, that concept more than anything.
Yeah.
And more of a duplex style, quads, triplexes, even garden-style is sort of, is out of the question with everything. Which I'm not a fan of quads, and I'd try to rather keep it to duplexes myself.
But the walk away from Plan Three was that we were thinking the unit count would go down. Because that was what we were talking about when we finished the last meeting, is that we were trying to take out some of those units in Plan Three. So that's, that's the other part.
Once again, creating some open space.
Yes.
Which drives them going down.
Yep.
By creating some more open space, giving a little more privacy to those center units, I think is what we're looking at, is what you're saying?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, looking at that plan that's on the screen right now, I think that one's much closer to where we need to be at, in my opinion. Just besides those, those duplexes that are kind of surrounded on all sides. To me, that, that plan, that plan feels much closer to where we need to be at. Just another comment I had, though, was kind of, the, the plans still feel to me like there's a lot of just dead straight road. I kind of, to the best of my ability, scaled off the plan how long that run is at the, the top. And it's about 900 feet scaled. And that just seems like a lot of pavement. And, you know, if you're lining up houses on that, on that straightaway, it kind of feels like a runway. And we had talked about maybe looking at that during that peer review. I don't know how, if that was discussed at all.
No, I don't think we did discuss that.
No, we didn't. We, well, I think Tom made up a good point, is the houses that abut Village, the road at Village Green, he put a lot of time in with those people in order to give them a buffer on the backside. So we sort of, I mean, and he, they're very comfortable, it seemed, and he was comfortable with those one, two, three, four, five, six units. I think there's six units there. So I think it would, I think it would be very hard to, and there may be a way to do it. Very, very hard, though, to create some kind of slingshot roads in there at this point. I don't know if you could or not. But I think those six units are pretty cast in stone as far as your, your discussions and with the, with the neighbors on that side. Is that correct?
We, we located those so that, you know, we took into account where their family rooms are, or sunrooms, and where they were looking out in the back. And I'd hate to try to move those around and everything, and then go back on my word, and we'll actually go back and meet with them again on that. Let me, let me ask.
I'd say one thing on that, too. We did talk with the peer reviewer about that road and those units up against that buffer and trying to, he didn't have an issue with the alignment, but we did talk about dropping the grade of the units that are along that edge so that they're a little lower than what we'd shown previously, and actually sunken down from that edge a little bit. And I thought that that was something that made a lot of sense, and will probably actually help with the earthwork as well when we, when we get into those calculations.
Yeah, David, that was one of the good ideas that did come out of the workshop, is lowering the units. It made it better for the butters, and taking that fill and putting it over on the other side of the project. So we, I think we all agreed that that was a good idea.
Can I ask, so what's, what's the problem with a 900-foot run? I mean, I mean, I have no problem with a long run, let's, you know, that in the future with that tree lined and so forth. I almost think, I mean, if you look at like, let's say, Carmav in Boston, right? It's a beautiful street. You know, so is there a problem with, with straight runs? Is there something that, I don't know, is it, is it... Is there something that, I don't know, is it, is it some safety issue, speed issue? Uh, is, is, what's the problem with a straight run?
I don't have an issue, but I know some people don't like a straight run.
Just, in my opinion, it's just from a, you know, visual.
Just a visual?
Creek Drive is, uh, is pretty straight for a very long distance. And there's just, there, there's just a lot of pavement, and it doesn't, it doesn't feel as much like, you know, driving through, like, country roads, and a lot of, a lot of roads, I think, throughout Norfolk are kind of windy, and you, you don't feel like you're just, you know, driving on the highway.
Full disclosure, Devin and I both live on Creek Drive. I like the straight shot. I like, we have a line of trees on both sides.
Well, you're fur, you're further down the straight shot.
You also have a big hill. It's not a big hill. I've run up that hill.
Now, that's Stop River.
No, 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 you come down Stop River, and then there's, there's an incline to Creek Drive. Please believe me.
Yeah, there's a little incline. I walk my dog every day, and I think it's beautiful, so it's, it's, you know, it's, all right.
Some people like it, some people don't.
One last...
I like it.
One, one last question here with the, you know, with the, we're talking about reduction of units on this. How, how important is, you know, having a looped road like this? I mean, what would happen if you, if you did have, you know, a, a road come in that was, was curved with a cul-de-sac, and maybe a couple of other cul-de-sacs off of it, like that? I mean, um, if you're lowering units or whatever, um, I mean, does it, you know, I'm just, just throwing that out there. I mean, I'm hearing a lot of different, you know, discussions about, um, you know, straight roads, reduction units, more open space. Um, I mean, there's, there's a lot of pavement here, and there's a lot of roadways here. If we're going to be reducing units, I mean, is that loop road circle, you know, necessary with that? If you had cul-de-sacs and a fire truck to turn around it?
I'm not opposed to removing it. I don't know what other board members feel. I think if you can give some privacy and some, uh, with reduction in units and things, I think you can, like you said, curve that road in, get rid of that loop, I think you can do a nice job.
Yeah. I, I, I'm just looking for, just some direct, some, some, and Matt and I ain't going to go back and talk, but just options.
I mean, it would be the fire department as well, to make sure, but I mean, I, I don't see an issue with that, removing that.
My only comment on that, um, would be just, one of my comments from a long time ago, kind of at the beginning, was how long that dead-end distance was. And I know, if you go down Village Green, um, to that, kind of that other cul-de-sac, uh, it's already a, a dead-end street. So is it really making it that much worse? If this is kind of matching what the other street is, in that area?
Is that Stacy Drive, I think it is, or is that what it is, Stacy Drive down there?
Uh...
It's the loop, the big loop down there, right? Is that Stacy?
Yeah, Stanhope.
Yeah. Stanhope, sorry. Had the S right. Any other comments with regard to the loop?
It sounds like he's talking about having some additional cul-de-sacs in here versus the Village Green type of thing, right?
Well, he's going to remove the long 900-foot road, bring it in more.
Kind of spread out the green space to those other cul-de-sacs.
I'm looking at it. If we're going to reduce units, try to reduce maybe some road costs, reduce some impervious area, and make more green area, if that's the, if, if that's, I'm just looking, you know, I'm not saying that's the answer, but...
Right.
It's just something that we'd like to look at, if that's, you know...
As the board feel.
I think more green area is good.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I, I will have to talk to the folks in New York before I can do almost anything with some direction with that, so...
Yeah, I understand.
And in consideration for, again, with the fire department and the police would say about the roadways.
Yeah.
You know, in terms of their ability to use and get in there and get out.
I mean, if, if that was the case, they would be subdivision standard roads, they wouldn't be 18 feet wide and things. They, they'd meet that standard.
Okay.
So, um, if we're all set here, would I, would, I know there's a meeting next week.
Yep. For, uh, Abbeyville, correct?
Yes, um, and I, and if, we're actually, what I'd like to talk to the board about is, is actually continuing that, and I had a minute to talk to, to Rich about it before the meeting, is, um, I just don't think we have enough information back, um, to, to have any type of meeting that really accomplishes anything. Uh, I mean, I've, I've submitted the, the consolidated comprehensive, um, construction and ma, management plan, but I know the engineer is still working, Rick Udrow, to wrap up his plans, which won't be done until Monday. That is not, in all fairness, enough time to give peer review on that, because what we're doing now is, I must try to say, the cleanup phase, trying to take all the comments from the public hearings, all the minutes, all the, um, peer review consultants, and we're putting them all together to get a plan as close as possible, um, that reflects everything that was, you know, that was mentioned in meetings and everything, so the board has something that's really comprehensive to look at, and the peer review has something comprehensive to look at. And I, and I, it's taken a little bit more time than we thought to, uh, put all that together, and I think the, uh, peer review consultants, um, need a little bit more time. And also, um, there was a meeting yesterday on site. Our LSPs, um, walked the site to determine different observation areas and test locations. Weston and Sampson was invited, it was about a week's notice, and, um, we had it scheduled for nine o'clock yesterday morning. Uh, they weren't able to make that. They said they could make two o'clock. We did move that meeting to two o'clock, and then there was an emergency, and they couldn't make that meeting as well. Um, so I know that our LSPs are putting together the plan, they're going to send it to Weston and Sampson, have them review it, if they wanted to add or have any other comments on where we're going to do additional testing. Um, we wanted to incorporate that, and that's something that needs to be done, too, and I'm not sure if that would be even done for, for next meeting and things. So I just think there's a, there's, um, that there would not be a lot accomplished.
Okay.
And I, and I was wondering if the, if, um, there's a date open in mid-August, and if next week's open, maybe we could come back. Pressure's on you, Matt. Let's try to come up with, maybe just have a, a discussion with, you know, a couple of plans. If, if you're not meeting, then I, and I understand, but, you know, it's something that we could try to expedite this.
Do you want to try to put this together for next week, for next Wednesday?
Yeah, if we could keep that meeting...
I mean, you could also, you could also put it on for the first, if you didn't want to have Marv trying to make this work for next week. We could fit you in probably for this type of same review on the first. We only have one hearing on the first of August. Are you available, Dan, still? You're not?
I'm one.
You're away. But this is going to be a conceptual review, maybe, so.
It's fine.
Did you want to do that, or do you prefer next week?
I'm going to defer to Matt on this.
About, Mr. Chairman, I understand there's a planning board meeting, but we, we also have the 25th as a possibility.
A planning board meeting, when?
There is a, I understand there is a planning board meeting.
On the...
On the following Wednesday. But there's no reason why we couldn't also meet on that Wednesday.
Yeah.
Is that not the 25th?
We don't have, in August, we don't have anything set for the 25th.
I understand.
You're saying July.
I'm saying July, yeah.
Yeah. No, we don't have anything, but I don't know if we...
Maybe you could meet downstairs in the small conference room?
On the 25th.
On the 25th, which would give you, uh, basically two weeks.
To try to put together...
Yeah, 13 days.
Well, we've got, since we've got scheduled ZBA meetings for the first and for the 15th, so that's why I'm trying to fit them into those...
I understand.
... parameters.
Right. Sounds like you can...
Or, or next week, the 18th. So you, you can either have the, right now, I'd say the 18th, the first, or the 15th.
Okay. Matt's not here on the 18th. He's, he's out of town.
Which is next week.
So it could be...
Do you want to go for the first?
Now, are you not here all next week, or would you, you just...
No, it's just that night.
Just that night? Okay. So I mean, you, you would be involved in, um, putting something, do you think you could put something together meaningful?
For the 18th.
For the 18th.
A sketch?
Sketch, okay.
That's not even a week.
His drawing abilities are a lot better than yours and mine.
Oh, it's not? Actually, it's just...
Second.
So...
We, we want to keep things moving.
Yeah, we really want to try to keep some things moving here.
All right, so you want to try for next week?
For the 18th, and, and come in with, with at least one, maybe two.
And we can handle the, why don't you have Johnson over something, ask him for a continuance on Abbeyville?
Mm-hmm.
And then we can reschedule that, at that, once we receive that.
Okay.
Check in everybody's schedule.
So...
In a minute, we'll make a motion to maybe, uh, to move this hearing till next Wednesday, okay?
Chris, we may have a, we may have comments.
We have comments, Tim.
I'm sorry. So, so there's not a meeting set for, a continuance for Abbeyville yet, but we do that next meeting?
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
Next, next.
Just so you know, I can't do the 15th either.
Okay. All right. We'll have to figure out the Abbeyville next hearing.
Okay.
You can be at the Freeman.
That's right, you need to be at the, the Freeman Kennel School.
We'll have to figure it out. Okay, we can figure out Abbeyville, that's easy. Just ask John to send over a letter, a continuance.
It's going to have to be there, Deb, okay?
Let's get through this, and then we'll make a motion to move to, to continue this hearing next Wednesday. Okay?
Great.
All right. Comment from the public?
Can I just offer a comment? My name is Tony Centauri, I live in Medfield. I was the chair of a recently completed senior housing study in Medfield. And what we found was, most people liked what you have done, Tom has done at Rivers Edge, a ranch unit. And, and I'm living in Medfield, I'm looking to move someplace, I like what Tom's did at Rivers Edge. There are very few places that offer ranch units. They're all up and down, and for seniors, stairs, there's a no-no. There's all kinds of things that, that come into the situation. The other thing that I'm concerned about is, if you start squeezing, not squeezing, actually putting less units on this property, what are the price points going to be? And I know from the seniors that, I know in the surrounding towns, that, you know, you get up around 5, 550, you get near the tops of a lot of seniors who are living in houses, who they, they bought, you know, 30, 40 years ago, and, and when they sell their house, they just don't have the kind of money to move in and spend $800,000 for a new condo. So, and, and the other thing would be, in the green space that you had in one of the schemes here, it would be nice if you had some kind of a gathering place, either a bandstand, or something, to, to have some conce, cohesive feel about the units, rather than it looks like a bunch of, you know, military housing. Anyway, I like what Tom has done, I commend him for it, and I, and I'm, because of the fact that it's a ranch unit, a lot of people are going to be looking at this, and I, and I hope it comes to pass. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I be your broker? Since we know that, we have the first unit sold already, right?
I have it in the closet on me.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Anyone else?
Anybody else?
Anyone else take other comments?
Sure. Yes, sure. Would you grab a mic and just state your name?
Claudia Wilkinson, Village Green. I just wanted to remind the board, I think you're already aware of it, I had no idea that there was any conversation about increasing the number of units, and, um, in addition to the character or the feel of the yards and the units themselves that are new, I'd just like to remind people of the impact of the additional traffic, whether it be 30 units or 40 units, certainly 56 or 59 units on the existing neighborhood. It's, you know, I think it was already a concession to put yet another cul-de-sac in, um, and 56 is, you know, the additional traffic and the impact on those of us who live there already is significant, so...
Thank you.
Also, I, one thing I'd like to throw out, and I don't know whether anyone has brought up this idea, and it's probably minor, but, um, something that would make it attractive to those of us who live there, if it were possible, obviously there's no outlet, you know, for vehicle traffic, but if there were some pedestrian access toward the center of town, um, that would be a big bonus. I have no idea whether that idea has been approached, or whether it's remote...
I think you have, Tom.
Remotely possible, I mean, there's a, there's a path through the woods now, and if that could be improved and maintained, so that people who live on Village Green had pedestrian access to the center of town, that, you know, would...
Okay. Tom, do you want to talk to that a little bit? That, I think at one point, you had proposed a path coming out between 48 and 46 Rockwood?
Oh, to Main Street?
To, to Rockwood Road.
Um, I'm not familiar with that one.
In one of the drawings, it showed some, a path coming out there, in between those two units?
I'm not...
Those two houses?
Existing path goes towards Boardman, like Juniper and...
Right, right.
Yeah, there was...
There is a sort of a dirt path, or...
You, you have to cross, um, basically, uh, there's a, there's a river, or, or, right, there's, there's a riparian zone in there that you'd have to cross and disturb, and it, it wasn't towards Rockwood, I think it was towards Boardman, wasn't it?
Right.
We're talking the same way, Juniper and Boardman?
We're talking the same way, Juniper, right off of Boardman.
Yes, yes.
And there is an existing path, but that wasn't on any of his plans, that I saw.
No, I, I haven't seen that. And, and a lot of that depends, if this is a condominium, it's private property, of having the public coming through it. If it's, if it ends up being a public way, um, then, you know, something like that could be accommodated, you know? But it still would have to go back to Conservation Commission. There is also a natural heritage overlay on this, so there will be, so there'll be limitations on what could be done with that. Usually they're fine with passive, you know, paths and recreation, but it, it would take some further investigation.
Okay. All right. No further questions? I'd like, I'd entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for the enclave project till July 18th at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Falls in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Okay. All right, so we'll plan on the 18th, and then, um, if you could ask John to put together a letter, and we'll, and then we can discuss the next one for the Abbeyville.
Sure.
Which probably is looking, Dan's away on the 15th, so we're going to have to work on getting a date for that. Are you away just the first through the 15th, or?
Just that one week.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, I'm gone this week.
The first?
I have a conference that night.
Okay, so maybe we'll have to try to figure something out for August, Tom. Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Chris, could we take a five-minute recess, and then we're gonna continue the public hearing? Welcome back to the zoning board of appeals meeting for July 12th. It is 8:10. With us now is Rich McCarthy, our Norfolk Town Planner, who's gonna discuss with us the, some ZBA regulations, and other fees, as well as the subsidized housing inventory worksheet. Rich, welcome.
Good evening. Yes, yeah. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We'll first go through some proposed changes to the regulations first. Would that be acceptable?
Absolutely.
Okay. One of the things that, first, we'll start off with the fees, I guess that's the first on the agenda. We'll talk about as far as regulation changes. Before the May Town Meeting, the fees that were filed for applicants, we had to include advertisement costs, the required public hearing notices in the paper. What we did in May Town Meeting, we were able to set up a revolving account for the Board of Appeals, as well as the Planning Board, so that way, when the applications come in, we can take the money into a revolving account, and then pay out directly to the Sun Chronicle when they're advertised. Believe it or not, it's, that change actually is pretty important to us, at least from a budget standpoint, because we have, as you know, you have a lot of activity going on, and we've really run up against our total budget for the year for advertisements. So this will actually help us, so applicants pay in, and then we pay out. You know, you collect the fees for applications, on the old system, it'd go into the general fund, it wouldn't come out till well after this is all done. So even though you collected the money, it had to get reprocessed through the whole budget to get it back out. So by changing that in May, we can now directly bill out. So consequently, what we want to do is suggest a change to the fee, which, your fees are actually lower than the planning boards when it comes to special permits, so we wanted to equalize those fees. Where a straight-out fee would be $500 for a special permit, plus the advertisement. Right now, we're at $300 for the fee for a special permit, which, the fee associated with that would be my time if I was reviewing something, Amy's time, the administration time. And, believe it or not, that kind of adds up over time with the projects coming in between phone calls, writing decisions, and so forth, and then taking care of the board. So we felt that, on the planning board side of things, those actually would be lowered a little bit. They were a little higher. There was $750 per permit, for a special permit. So that's one thing that we're proposing. And we'll, you can, you want to go by each one, or want, I'll run through them, and then we can kind of go through?
Run through.
All right.
Are you gonna, is this, would we be approving these this evening?
So, so I should back up?
Yes.
Good point, thank you. Tonight, I'm just discussing these in general with you. The process would be, we would have to do the textual changes to the regulations, hold the public hearing, and then you have to vote them in a subsequent meeting. So we're talking about, I think we're 15th, I think?
I think.
We're, depends how we get through the changes. We're looking at the 15th of August to hold a public hearing for you on the changes. But yeah, so this is really just a kind of preview of what we're gonna be looking to change, and then hopefully you will adopt it, and...
Rich, excuse me, before you get too far, have you looked at what other towns are doing, and compared with?
B-wise?
B-wise?
Yeah, we have, yes.
All right.
Another thing that we're going to be changing is, more of a, just a procedural thing, is in the, there's a section in the regulations that deals with quorum. We just want to clarify that when it's just general business of the board, it's three members, not four. Four is dealing with the permitting, when you have to actually issue permits. So if you're just administratively dealing with matters, you only need three people present for a quorum. It's not a big change, but nevertheless, a change that makes sense to clarify. The meeting schedule right now in your regulations, the start time is 7:30 PM. I don't think you've been starting that late for quite some time. So we want to, we're gonna change the time to reflect to what you do, as far as your real time that you start. The meeting, we have, there's a section dealing with, Section 7, dealing with meeting schedule. We're gonna, again, update that to reflect what you do today. Another larger change is actually the number of plans that we get. Because we've been doing things electronically, we're gonna be proposing to reduce the number of paper copies that we have. And then, also, we do get them electronically now, but we're actually changing the regulations to reflect that we want to get them electronically. People are doing what RAS, but technically they're not in the regulations, to do that. Same thing with the number of plans in Section 4 with petitioners. We're gonna, a reduction in the number of paper copies. Excuse me. The next thing we're gonna do, which we do already, is transmitting all the application materials to different departments electronically. We're gonna, we're gonna propose to put that within the regulations. And we did find that we have to add a few departments in the regulations that weren't in there, the older regulations. So we're gonna update that as well. One of the things that we're proposing to do is to mail postcards of decisions. Once you render a decision, just send them out. Amy was looking at some other communities, and I know she has one there from the town of Med...
Wait.
That they use, which is, again, a little more, we would think, efficient, and then perhaps cost savings, that we could have a postcard that you just put in the printer and send out the notice. And that would, and that is allowable under statute.
As opposed to...
Nailing out the...
The decision.
Yeah, the decision. It's a difference in cost, so.
Are you allowed to electronically send out a decision, or is that not allowed by...
No, it still has to be paper.
It has to go to all the...
Yeah, the butters, two butters at 300 feet, surrounding communities, all has to go out by paper.
Okay.
We're gonna propose to make some changes and updates to the applications, which will provide you, I think there's, probably you've seen some areas where there's some information that should be included on the applications that aren't today. We'll get those to the board to take a look at.
Are we gonna require the applications to be filled out electronically? A lot of these applications we receive, you can barely read them, and they are not filled out correctly. Are we gonna require, in most cases, obviously, there's gonna be a few individuals who are in computer literate, or have the ability to fill out...
Yeah, and we, and, good segue to that. So we haven't began the process yet, but the billing department has gone to, you know, they had previously permitting online. And one of the progressions in that permitting online is to include the planning board, zoning board of appeals, the Conservation Commission, which is electronic filing. So we will be going in that direction shortly. So we're gonna, so we're gonna, I like to try and see if we can straddle both issues, so you have it so that it is legible, for ones that are written, I think that's probably what we're talking about, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, but also allow for that electronic patients as well. And I agree, I had some hard times in the application.
Excuse me.
To know what's what. The other thing we talked about, Amy and myself, is just organizing the procedural, so that things kind of coincide together a little bit. So when you have a section dealing with voting, it's all in one section, it may differ. Although, not really that helps, to be honest with you. But have things kind of organized by type, like public hearing notice, and filing fees, instead of scattered throughout different sections. So as we talk about this, hopefully, we're, we might put a ambitious schedule, but we're gonna try to do this, so that we're targeted for August. And we put a self-imposed deadline out for us to do that. And those are some of the changes that at least we've identified, I think, makes sense to do. I don't know if there's thoughts on your mind of things that, through the years, you feel like hasn't been done, that we need to do relative to your procedurals and regulations?
I think, I think the application was a big issue, and I think the number of copies. I think there was a good changes, I think, too many. And maybe have some, maybe force the system, when it goes to electronic, is forcing them to fill out the application completely, not just, say, C attached, you know, or C above. Force them to actually put something into each, each one of the questions.
Right. And well, I'll need to talk to the billing department, but, so, one of the things they do have, if you see, they have the kiosk there at the counter, and they have a scanner there as well. So I'm hoping I haven't talked about this, but maybe we can utilize that, that kiosk there and the scanner for our applications as well? If not, we'll probably have to do a similar thing. We'll have to set up a kiosk with a scanner, in case somebody wanted to come in and do it electronically here, versus at home, wherever. But I'll have to report back to you on that.
Okay.
There's one topic I'd like to raise, and that is the review of the applications when they come into the land use office. How are we, are you looking at them in detail, and making sure that, first of all, the proper bylaws being referenced, that they're completed properly? You know, what I'm trying to avoid, what I, you know, what I've seen over the past 20 years, is sometimes applicants get to us, and they shouldn't even be here. I mean, they should be cut off, you know, somebody in the land use office should be saying, this is filled out improperly, you're requesting the wrong relief from the wrong bylaw. I mean, is, what's the process that goes on, or is there a process that goes on? Is it just automatically scheduled, once it comes in the window? I mean, is there, what's the review process look like, and can we tighten that up?
We can. As far as tighten up, yes, I guess there, we don't have really that kind of finance process in place.
Yeah, I'd like to recommend some oversight of all the applications that come in, to, you know...
Well, I think we can do, and actually, that's a good point, and maybe what I can do is actually incorporate into the regulations as well. So that way, there's a lot more encouragement for applicants to come in, or at least to make an appointment or call in, and kind of talk about what they want to do before they apply. Because right now, it's, they apply, and, but if they do apply, we can, I'll come back to you with a process that we can...
If you can come back to us with some ideas, that would be great.
Yeah, because we had about three or four hearings last year.
Mm-hmm.
I think Pawlattic was one, where we kept jumping back and forth between Avear and special permit. We had the fence company on Pond Street that really didn't need to appear before the board.
Okay.
He had by right.
Was all before November last year?
Um, yes.
Oh, good.
Part of it is, we want to save the applicant money, I mean...
Yeah, no, I agree. Yeah, no, we could definitely...
Write a big check, and...
I mean, we've been doing that a little bit, but not, not as, as a good, we can do that.
Okay.
Not a problem. No, it's a good point.
Great. Are you also looking for the Fall Town Meeting, at some of the zoning bylaws we have? Changes to them?
Yeah. The answer is always yes. For what we get to, I'm not sure. So, one of the things we're working on is, we did apply for a grant, and we're gonna be looking at the center, the B1 zoning. And as part of that process, there'll be some zoning changes. I don't know necessarily if we'll get into November or not, with the timing of it, because we're into July. But I think, most likely, we would have something for the spring. I will say, there is some things that we're gonna work on for November already. I do have a list of some working ones. A particular one is related to the Aquifer bylaw. We do need to update the bylaw to, number one, right now, the bylaw says, you go online and look at the GIS version on the state website. That's been something that's been identified we have to change, as part of the development of the Holbrook Street well. So we're gonna do that. At the same time, what I want to do is take the Aquifer, the Zone Two areas that are on the, that are, that presently, you can view them on the state website, is incorporate them into our zoning map, so they'll be all in one place. So those are two at the top of my head that I think about, that we need to do. If you have specific things that you want to try to move forward, just let me know. I don't know if you have something at the top of your mind, or...
No, we just, I think we, the Rockwood Road one comes to mind, is where we have a couple of zoning articles that contradict each other with regard to non-conforming properties. I don't know if anybody else read it, but the Margaret Neer case that we, we looked at a couple of years ago, has now, again, been thrown out, or has been ruled against, the appeal was denied on that property. That was the one up on, I think it was off of Lawrence area, it was, it was actually up at Pawlattic in that area. Remember the, it was the vacant lot that the trustee who owned the adjacent lot bought?
Yes.
Right, it was an undersized lot. Just some of our, the judge clearly looked at our bylaws.
Those were, yes.
Okay.
And we can, I can review it with you.
All right.
Because I want to read it. Looked at our bylaws, and the inconsistency in our bylaws left a lot of wiggle room.
Okay.
That, that created problems for this board, when we were reviewing it, and obviously created problems for the judges. And so it was, it was upheld by one judge, a second judge denied it, so it's back now, and I think in Superior Court. But it's, it's clearly our bylaw... But it's, it's clearly our bylaw left a lot to be desired in order to solve it. And I think that's one we probably should look at. And the obviously, non-conforming, I think if you look at our non-conforming, there's a lot of questions how we, how we deal with that. The writing of, when we were dealing with 144 SecoN, there's the issue of, I think, where the comma is with regard to whether it be undeveloped land versus a subdivision. Remember Chris Agostino had some issues with, you know, how we, what we were really, what we were really fighting about on that one. So I can, we can talk about that a little bit. So those ones are some ones that, as we, as they come to the board, I think we should probably resolve them.
Okay.
And not let them sit out there and languish.
So Mr. Chairman, if I recall, there's an issue with an actual procedure for finding. Is it, says in the bylaws, we actually have to find by each day? And it has to be an actual notification or invoice for each day?
Right. Well, that would be the zoning enforcement officer, he has to, that's in his bylaw, not ours. That's actually his responsibility as a zoning enforcement agent. But that's something you can.
I would hope that, you know, Bob would address that.
Yeah, so technically, when, the way the statute is written, you do have to cite, you do have to find somebody each day.
Right.
So that's unfortunate, that's on Bob, he's, so we can't change that, but, but the finding, we can take a look at.
Okay, any other questions?
Uh, yeah, with regards to when we get additional information and stuff prior to a hearing, is there any way that we can incorporate in language stating that if someone's gonna submit additional information, it has to be a week prior? So it actually gives the board time to review it instead of, you know, getting it the night before a hearing? Makes it extremely difficult to thoroughly review.
I think ideally, I think ideally, we'd love to. I think until we start telling people that, no, we won't discuss that issue tonight, it's not gonna change. So I guess as a board, we have to, I guess, become more diligent if we don't want to hear testimony or don't want to hear peer reviews, if they only come in the day before, we just can tell them that we won't address that till the following hearing and eventually people will start to submit their paperwork in a appropriate amount of time.
Okay.
I think that's the best way to handle that. I think we can put in writing, but I think it already is in writing, isn't it, that they're to get it to us seven days beforehand, as far as their.
They're not sure, to be honest with you.
Yeah, and so, we'll just have to be more diligent about denying people the peer review until the following meeting and eventually people will get it.
All right.
Good point.
Could we verify that in writing, seven days?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can check. I think we can check and see what it says in our regs. But I think it's also, we ask them to have it to us a week ahead of time. We just have to start enforcing.
And the strategy of not.
Just have to start enforcing, you know, being a little tougher on the applicants.
Agreed.
Yeah, well, I'll go through the reg, just double check. I mean, at least worthwhile to have, and then have it incorporated in your regulations, so at least way it's in paper, it's in writing and then.
Right.
How you apply it, you know, it's up to the board, but it's good to have it, so that way, as a fail safe, we can always say it's in the regulation.
Yeah.
I guess we could say the same thing about continuing, someone who wants to continue a hearing and they, they contact Amy the day of the hearing and ask the board for a continuance without a justification, without, with minimal justification.
Yeah.
We could put something in writing stating it has to be, you know, forty-eight or seventy-two hours ahead of time. If not, the hearing will be, the hearing will go on as scheduled, maybe something like that. Because that's also something, we don't have cast in stone, which maybe we should do.
Excuse me, I want to get back to, because I guess I'm a little confused. In the administration of enforcement, it specifically talks about in our bylaws that whether it be criminal or non-criminal, that the procedure will be three hundred dollars for each offense and each day such violation continues shall be deemed a separate offense. And what I'm hearing is the way that that is administered is Bob's responsibility and it's not, not part of the bylaws. So I guess my question is, I've never seen it written in the area of the zoning enforcement officer's responsibility that he has to make a notification each day since they are all separate offenses. All right. This to me is a very important issue because it has to do with our enforcement capabilities aboard. If we can't enforce what we put in writing, then we're kind of like.
Well, I think we, I think we enforce it, it says that. I think your point earlier is it's a responsibility of the zoning enforcement officer to write that ticket each day. It's not the, it's not our job to write that ticket each day, it is his responsibility to write each day as the defense continues. And I think it clearly says it, each day is a separate offense.
Yes.
So each day, he has to do that. But that's, that's, that's really on, that's the purview of Bob Bullock. It really, if Bob Bullock isn't doing his job, I guess we can ask him to come in and explain to us why, but that's his responsibility. The board, the board, the zoning laws state he's supposed to do that. Whether he does or not is.
Could not the law be changed to state that each day violation continues is deemed a separate offense and worded to such that if I notify that you have violated this, all right, that I don't, do I have to keep sending you a notice every single day or you're in violation as this goes on?
Absolutely, you have to send them, you have to send them a notice each day. I think the state statute said you have to send them.
Yeah, the statute, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and that was the, I'm sure you got a lot of contention on that with 144 SecoN Street. I know at least I've heard it on the backside of things.
Mr. Chairman, just going off what you had said about the forty-eight to seventy-two hours, asking for a continuance prior to a hearing, I think there should be a little bit of wiggle room with substantial reason.
Yes.
If we want to incorporate that.
There should be a substantial reason why they're asking for a continuance.
If they're.
If they're, if they're inside of that window.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I think, I think, I don't think we have, it's not a cast in stone, but I think we have to put something in writing stating that we, continuances will have to be notified to board forty-eight hours, seventy-two hours ahead of time unless a particular instance occurs that does not allow that to happen.
Yeah.
And it can't be, I just, I'm not ready. Because I think in forty-eight hours, you know you're ready or not.
Yeah.
So it'd have to be something substantial.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you understand that, Rich?
Yeah, for good cause.
Right, right.
Yeah, I get the intent of what you're asking for. Let me look at that a little bit, I'm trying to think about, we certainly could attempt to put in the regulations, though, on the statute, they, I think they probably fall back to, they could literally come in, come in the night of a hearing when scheduled date and time and say, I'm continuing. But let me look at that a little bit more. I understand that.
It's happened before.
Yeah. It may be more directive, you know, that suggestive language, that they give you a forty-eight hour notice without good cause. I don't know if we can regulate it, but I'll.
Yeah, well, I think we've had Nine Fruit Street, we've had a couple of continuances and we've had some very angry people from the public asking the board, why? You know, why are we allowing continuances? All the, and we have been waiting for the applicant to provide us more information, but.
Yeah.
They're coming in the day of the hearing and people are getting annoyed. And I think the applicant probably could make more of an effort to, to get us advanced notice.
Absolutely, they could definitely, it's good practice to tell you they're coming, they're not coming and so forth, so I understand, I definitely understand. Though just to fall back that until that time and date is, you know, I always advise people, the public in large, that when, you know, we know that there might be continuance, again, until the board takes action on it, you know, proceed your own risk.
The one I was referring to that was ambiguous was D one A one.
D one A one?
Which was the one for non-residential uses, comma, land clearing, comma, excavation. Now, when there was some, we had some contention at the beginning of the, the appeal hearing for 144 as to what that included. So that may be one we want to, maybe just clean up the language a little bit.
Okay. Let's segue over to the subsized housing inventory.
Okay.
Should be relevant. You have three sheets that I provided you. The main one kind of summarizes more or less where we're at. I include what, the forty B units that were as of 1-1-2010. New forty B units since 2010. The local action units, which counted towards the, which are part with the affordable housing trust units that we have. And then that goes to 165 at the moment. The 2010 census was 3,112 residential units. That was a 5.3 percent. And the next line down is what I did, which is 447. Essentially, is all the residential permits that have happened since 2010 to the present. So that number now, I updated it, is from July 2nd. So your running denominator is 3,559. So essentially translates to 356 units in order to reach 10 percent. Of course, that doesn't, that's, that's snapshot right now. We're not at 20, we're not at 2010 yet. 2020, sorry. And it doesn't account for some things that are before the board now that are going to go into construction, which gets you to the third sheet. Gives you an idea of where, where things are. So the last sheet has, again, just gives you a summary of what you approved to date and then the bottom of the page gives you that running, running total, what's before you and then the Lake, Lakin Hills and Lakeland Commons is, as you know, is held off until there's other decisions on Abbeyville and the enclave.
What is page two, the number 447, the running total? That's a running total of what? Is that new construction?
It's new construction, yeah.
Oh, new construction that is not affordable housing?
It includes affordable housing too, yeah, it's all types. So it's, it's affordable on market rate.
So there's the thirty-one new forty B units since 2010 census, that's the number of forty B approved on the second page?
Yes.
Is there any reason not tracking the total number of units as well in this last page for the first three or four?
The total number of units? Yeah, well, what I do is I'll, if you look, well, the 2018 number includes some of those, ones that are already under permitting from 2018. So the.
This is just a breakout of the forty Bs for those specific ones that are long done.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, so, for example, the Boyd's Crossing.
Well, it's almost, it's in construction.
Yeah, those, those permits are within that 2018 count, the 2017 count.
So in the case of Meeting House Road, it says five, right? Forty B units?
Yes.
We have more than five units total at that location, don't we?
Yeah, you do, actually. Yeah, so it's twenty. There was twenty there. So I could actually, if you want, I can, I don't have the total units in the, so I'll, I'll update the schedule so you have the total number of units. Or actually, all of them. Well, Rockwood Road is maybe two?
Yeah, and then.
And Boyd's is forty and Cleveland's thirty-two, Meeting House is twenty, so those are the numbers, I'll lay them in the table and then resend it to you, so you have them.
Okay, okay.
Those you kind of, well, see to a degree, it's a moving target, obviously.
So to meet the 10 percent criteria.
You have to stop all building.
You have to need 191 more forty B just to hit that 356, as of just the numbers right now.
Right.
So.
But doesn't that incremental, that make it three, the three five project?
Well, yeah. Why I said just right now.
That never works, problem.
Yeah, that's the problem, the number starts, it'll go up again.
So even, even if you include all the forty B units from all five projects, then that's still less than the 165.
It is.
Still would be under.
Yeah.
The only way you really get there is by apartments, is that right? If you add apartment buildings, because then you can take total number of apartments in your calculation, right? So that's really the only way you get there.
And that's the.
Is adding apartment buildings.
Yeah.
Do all apartments become affordable housing units?
Yeah, you get to count, go ahead.
So.
Count them. Yes.
When it's a rental, yeah, all the units count, market rate and affordable.
So, so, so a market rate apartment would count as an affordable housing unit?
Yes.
Yes, towards our forty B goal, yeah, I think, so that's how, the only way you can get there.
Which is why the Lakeland Commons says twenty-eight total number of units and twenty-eight forty B units.
And Abbeyville Commons too, fifty-eight, fifty-eight, yeah.
But we can, we can get a two-year certification if we increase our housing by 1 percent, affordable housing.
Yeah, so, exactly, so you.
And what that means is during that certification period, during the certification period, ZBA may deny a comprehensive permit and its decision will not be overturned by the HAC housing. So, so it's almost like when you're looking at this whole thing and if you're approving a bunch of forty Bs within a calendar year, that could provide you with, I call it safe harbor, I don't know if that's the right word, but, or up to, if it's half of 1 percent, it's for one year and if it's 1 percent, it's for two years.
Right. So right now, we're, we're in safe harbor to December of this year, 2018, and.
In terms of accepting additional applications, correct?
Yes, that's right. And most likely, you know, you'll probably approve something that'll get you to December of 2019. Now, the thing to think about in some respects is when you're in safe harbor, it's very similar to being above 10 percent. Now the board can pick and choose, you know, you have the opportunity to say, this is a good project and we think it will help us and particularly to help us really to try to get to 10 percent in a, in a good, effective way. And you can be more selective about it and that's part of the strategy that many towns do and I think that's something we need to be thinking about because at the, the trends, more or less here is, as you see, there's a lot more ownership projects, which I understand, I mean, it makes some sense to a degree, but those don't help us from a numerical standpoint as well as a rental project. But it needs to be scaled appropriately as well, so it's a balancing act to try to, try to do this. And then, while we're in this window of safe harbor, before we get hopefully to 2020, we've put something together that strategically we can get to 10 percent because all those numbers are gonna recalculate in 2020. And because of these, some of these developments are, you know, ownership and they're subdivision, the build out is gonna be a different pace as well. So, you know, you get the, you get the forty B units and then six months from now, they don't go under permit, on building permits, they get off. So we have to be cognizant of that as well. One of the things, as I was encouraging you to consider, just generally speaking, is the forty Bs that you had before them, is that we push the affordable up. So when they do these, we really need to push developers to make sure they happen quicker. So we're not waiting around for forty B units to, to be built subsequently, so we're not losing them, you know, we, we get them. And there are some that are rental projects that are before you that I would highly encourage you to consider that that's done very early on if that were to be approved so we can get that number, you know. If they want to take their time building those ownership units that are not market rate, so be it, so to speak, in a way. I mean, obviously, it has to be context, but, you know, unfortunately, we do need to be a little more strategic about it because, you know, we are seeing forty Bs and we do see property marketed and you look at the listings and that's something that they talk about. So we need to be a little strategic responsive about that, so.
Okay. In comparison, towns like Rantham and Plainville, are we comparing what they're doing and if they're reaching? and if they're reaching a ten percent, for example?
So they are at ten percent, both of them now?
Right, I heard that.
Yeah.
I know it involves a lot of apartments.
But they did, and, yeah, they have large, you know, both of them have, Rentham's, I forget how many units, over two hundred units that they approved.
Right.
And then Plainville has, I think it was two hundred, they did on Route One.
Route One, yeah.
So, you know, if you have an appropriate location and that makes sense, that's one thing, but I'm not saying we're apples to apples per se.
No, I know, you have to look at what roadways we have, I understand.
Yeah, but, but generally speaking, a rental project, it can be smaller, you know, not two hundred, but if you have, you know, a smaller one that makes sense and fits within the community, then they, they do, you know, they are something we need to be given consideration towards.
Our challenge is the only true commercial roadway that we have in our town is 1A.
That's right.
And there's a nice big chunk of property there.
There is.
If we could get some of the people involved to move forward on that, that would be a terrific place for rental units.
Yeah, it would. They don't seem to be moving as, probably as quickly as one would want, which makes it a little bit disconcerting, right, because other people are moving, so I agree.
That's really the only commercial, that's the only commercial roadway we have in this town.
Is there a market for apartments in, you know, Norfolk, you know what I mean? Would there be a market for that?
Well, the units that they put up across, for example, from where Target is, okay, that mall?
Yeah.
That was a two hundred unit complex, okay? I think was rented out within weeks of, before it was even completed.
Yeah, I mean, there is a market for rental units, because, I mean, for a variety of different reasons, there's a changing housing demand. So for example, you know, on the aging side, some people are looking to downsize out into a rental unit, not necessarily own, but still be within their community, because they have their friends, they have their shopping, their places to go, so they want to, you know, they want to age out. And then on the other end, there's the younger people who, you know, are looking to...
Can't afford a house.
Can't afford a house, and also, to afford a house, it's a large investment, and, you know, do I make that investment or not make that investment? So there is kind of, there is a demand on the, call it the bell ended it. And so, yeah, there is, and trying to meet that demand is the challenge of it. You know, that's got to be, again, it's, there is a demand, but we got to scale it appropriately to fit with the character of the town, so that's the, you know...
Well, apartments are good when they're close to commuting opportunities, with the train station, Route 1A is close to other major roadways, which is, at least for commuters, can get quickly in and out.
And the center of town where the rail station is, where, and the housing production plan that was put together by the town approval last year, and that's one of the, you know, this is a location that you have the rail. And we have, you know, we have, we don't have sewer in town, except for there's a little bit of section in the center, but beyond that, it's septic, so, you know, the density is, you know, it's not going to be as high as some of these other, you know, so...
Yeah, there was once discussion about trying to do sewer in town. I don't know if it's going to be resurrected or not.
So we have, you know, we do have the plant, that we have some capacity for just over here where the shopping shop and the few properties that are over there, yeah, they're...
I remember talking about trying to take that, when they did the Freeman Kennedy School, they were talking about trying to tap that into a new sewer system.
Right. So one of the, so when we, actually when I talked earlier about the grant that we were going to be working, that's one of the things we'll look after the center of town, whether it makes sense to, to look at some additional sewer for the center of town. The challenge is, you want to be able to, you can't reserve capacity, so you need to be mindful how you do it, because you want to have capacity, but you can't just preclude people from tying into it. So, I mean, I think that's been the challenge before in the past, people worry about, you know, here's the capacity, you get the bad project versus the goods.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rich.
Alright, so we'll be back, I think our tenant plan, like I said, is for the fifteenth of August. So we'll get you a draft the beginning of August, so we're going to be able to do it. If we can't make that, we'll let you know, because we've got to advertise it two weeks, event of two weeks ahead of time.
Great.
Alright?
Thank you. Do we have a motion to close the, we have no minutes this evening to review. Do we have any other new business, anybody have any business they want to discuss? Hearing none, do we have a motion to close the zoning board of appeals meeting for July 12th at eight fifty PM?
Some moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, thank you, Chris, have a good evening.